We'll start in a moment, invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Jeff Watson will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the rains that you've blessed us with, and we ask that you please be with all those that are dealing with the flooding and the water. But we're so thankful for the gifts that you give us and watching over us. And Lord, ask that you please be with first responders tonight and during these fall rains, and please watch over them, keep them safe. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to serve our city. We ask that you be with us and guide us tonight, help us make the right decisions for our community. We thank you for all your blessings, all your gifts. We thank you for the forgiveness of our sins. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
All right, again, thanks everyone for being here. We'll call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Springdale City Council Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. And we'll start things off asking our city clerk Saber Jeffis to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Taldo.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Aaron Huntley.
Here.
Randall Herrman.
Here.
Mark Fujurus.
Here.
Ernest Kate.
Here.
All right, everyone's here. Thanks everyone for being here tonight. And we'll move right into item four, which is comments from our citizens. If we have any citizens that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, I ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief and understand that the council won't take action tonight. That is not already on tonight's agenda. Something happened to my mic. No one? All right then, we'll move on to item five, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If no changes or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
I'll move for A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and second for A and B. I'm gonna call for the vote.
Carrie's eight zero.
All right, thank you. And item seven, we'll roll right into the main event tonight. Planning Commission reporting recommendations by Sharon Tromberg, Director of Planning and Community Development. Sharon?
Thank you all, council, mayor. I feel like the podium is still moved.
Yeah, I'll just say real quick.
That's okay, I just had to get adjusted.
Yeah, last night Sharon was here, and I was present. But last night, we had a joint meeting of the two counties, Washington Benton County Quorum Courts. So we had thirty, well, counting the judges, thirty-two people.
It was impressive.
Up here, we had tables down in front too. But it worked great, they were very complimentary of the city and rare appreciative.
Fantastic turnout.
Yeah, great turnout. So anyway, that's why the podium's been moved a little bit.
All right, our first item, so our first item is a request for a commercial subdivision. So this final plat, the title of this reads, "An Ordinance Accepting the Final Plat of Clayton Street Business Park, FP-25-09, the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and Declaring an Emergency." And this one, it's just north of Sunset on Clayton Street, and I think we have twelve buildable lots already zoned C2. An emergency clause, we have some pending actions and items.
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Does anyone in the room need to speak to this item? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Carrie's eight zero.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the emergency clause. Call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carrie's eight zero.
Thank you. All right, next, we're gonna get into the rezonings. And our first two rezonings, they're part of a joint project called Ford Avenue Flats. And I kind of put a little box around them on the summary sheet that I sent out today. And I have the representatives and some of the engineers who are here, and they may speak to it if you guys have some more specific questions. But this project is a joint effort. Let me see if I have an aerial photo of them both. So it's a joint effort between Mercy Housing and Community Development Northwest Arkansas. And so this project is bringing some affordable multifamily housing to the area. And all these units will be reserved for households that are earning up to sixty percent of the AMI of that area medium income. And we have these, they are nearby each other, but they're not contiguous. So we have them as two separate projects. So we're introducing them with two separate ordinances. So if you'd like, I can read each one, or if you want to have some questions answered. Do you want me to go ahead and read the titles first? Okay. The first one, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto. By rezoning R-25-41, certain lands located at the southwest corner of Ford Avenue and Butterfield Coach Road from a medium-high-density multifamily residential district to a planned unit development within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency." And then item C, which is Ford Avenue Flats North, reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto. By rezoning R-25-42, certain lands located north of Ford Avenue, south of Barker Lane, from agricultural district to a planned unit development within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
Sharon, just, I know we've got that one up, and we'll have the other one up there. Okay. I was just wanting to look at them in relation to each other, but I can see now.
So this is what we're referring to as the Ford Avenue Flats South. And this, oops, going in the wrong direction. And this one is the Ford Avenue North.
So go back to that first. So the Ford Avenue North is that A1?
Correct. Yep, that A1 that is just on the north side of the Commons there.
I move both ordinance B and C be adopted.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the ordinance, both ordinances. Is that okay to do them that way, Ernest?
Do you want to?
We've got them on the record, she read.
Okay.
She read both titles, sorry, I've got to push my.
Okay, so we're taking both ordinances at once, and that's our motion and second. Any other comments or questions?
These look great, like, all the renderings look incredible.
These professionals right here in the first row, they did a very good job. They worked with us over several months, worked with our staff just to make sure that the buildings, the amenities, the open space, were all a great product to bring to Springdale.
Good deal. All right, if there are no other questions, I'll call for the vote.
Move the emergency clauses be adopted.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Both ordinances and emergency clauses, Carrie eight zero.
All right. Okay Sharon, everybody may have to speak up a little bit.
The emergency clause too, get voted? Okay.
Both passed.
All right then, going down to item D. Okay, so the next item, it's a commercial rezoning on West Huntsville Avenue. Here's a picture of that zoning map. The title of this reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto. By rezoning R-25-52, certain lands located at 2101 West Huntsville Avenue from medium-density multifamily residential district to a general commercial district within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency." And a few years ago, the applicant, the property owner, had rezoned the majority of the property to C2, and now they are looking to rezone that remnant that was left of multifamily to C2 to align with the rest as well.
Is this the one that they were going to need to share some parking lot to the east of there?
Um, I think there were some discussions in the background, but there's been nothing officially, we've not seen anything submitted to the planning department for review.
This is where we tore down that house, or they tore down the house?
Yeah, I can't hear you totally. Sorry, this rain.
This is where they tore down the house, and the cornfield and all that? I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Jeff?
So Sharon, I'm trying to remember that we dealt with this property before, right? You said a few years ago, we rezoned the front side of it? They, be the north side of it?
Correct, the north side of it.
Huh?
Yes, sir, the north side of it.
Is that included in what's shaded now? The north side of it?
That is, this.
Was it half and half, or what?
I apologize, the map that's actually on the summary sheet that I sent today more accurately reflects it.
Okay.
This parcel did have a structure that we voted to raise and remove, but the property owner pulled a demolition permit and raised the structure themselves.
But Mr. Watson has a point that this is not accurately mapped in this picture right here, that one on the summary.
But it did go, the purple part went all the way back, and we did not rezone the yellow part, is that what it was?
It did, I did not look back into the rezoning file to see if there was a reason why.
Well, I was trying to remember why we didn't act that way back then, and now they're asking us to do it again. But, and I'm not sure if I can remember, I was wondering if anybody remembered.
I thought we rezoned it to multifamily, and now they're wanting to rezone it to C2, correct?
Yeah, we did that, but they couldn't get road designs in there. It's too narrow to get a road and build all that in there.
Correct.
Okay.
Previously, part of it was rezoned C2, and part of it was left multifamily, and now they're wanting to change the multifamily part to C2? Is that what's happening?
If you'll see, if you'll notice Jeff, that if you look at the monitor, you can see underneath that portion that I guess they didn't rezone, which I guess, I can't read that, but I think it's MF-12 now. Right? So they didn't rezone that, I don't think. I think they just rezoned the rest, the purple part of it. Yeah.
The purple part that went all the way back to the south, that's currently commercial. Because it seems really deep for some reason. That kind of surprises me that we allowed it to go that deep when we rezoned it last time.
Is it currently commercial, or is it currently? I thought they were wanting to zone it to, I thought that's what we were voting on tonight.
They are.
To change it to commercial.
Correct, to change it to commercial. The small little strip of MF-12 that's on the east side, but that does go down all the way to the southern border with a C2 next to it, that's what they're seeking, just to have that come to C2.
That's my point. We went C2.
Pretty far south.
Pretty far south, which is a lot farther than I thought we would have, but basically they're just wanting to kind of square it off, even though it's not a square.
Guess so.
There's no opposition to that?
Nope, unanimous vote.
And there's no other way to get to that property, right? Other than from Huntsville?
That is correct, yeah. We've encouraged them to reach out to some of the adjacent properties to the east to try and potentially share access, that could be one, but that would be up to them.
Other questions or comments? Does anyone in the audience need to speak to this item? All right then, call for the vote.
Carrie's eight zero.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carrie's eight zero.
This is the hardest it's rained during a meeting that we've had in here.
Sounds like a white noise machine, it's gonna put me to sleep. Okay, the last rezoning. Our last rezoning item of the night is for a commercial business on North Thompson, North 71, almost to the northern boundary of Springdale. The title of this reads, "Amending an Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto. By rezoning R-25-53, certain lands located at 5829 North Thompson Street from a general commercial district to a thoroughfare commercial district within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency." So this piece of property has changed hands. The new owners want to give the property a little facelift, clean up the facade, bring a new business, so they're seeking a C5 zoning.
For a drive-through or outside storage, or?
Some outside storage. They're gonna have some larger pieces of equipment. I don't remember specifically what the business is, but it's gonna have some outdoor storage.
Sharon, I think we have someone wants to speak to it.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Gibbs, I work for Will Kelstrom, I'm representing the applicant today. I can't answer the question, they primarily deal with steel, and so it'll be large steel beams that they're trying to have retail use and just have it out in the front.
It looks like Planning Commission was unanimous support.
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Anyone else in the room? All right, we'll call for the vote.
Carrie's eight zero. Has an emergency clause.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second on the emergency clause, call for the vote.
Carrie's eight zero.
All right.
All right.
So we have two conditional uses that we are going to hear tonight. Find an aerial page. So the first one is for a use unit four and an SF2. So the applicants are seeking a cultural recreational health facility in a residential zoning. So what they want to do is, they have purchased a single-family home in a residential zoning, and they're seeking to have a memory care facility home for memory care patients to be able to live out their life there. They came through Planning Commission, we looked, let's see, because they are gonna be doing some potential work to the home. Right now, they can, I think, hold up to six individuals, but they are planning, and Building Department is reviewing some of the house plans that we have, of adding on a wing and having up to fourteen beds and patients there at that location. And this parking layout, the one of the PowerPoint, is slightly outdated. The angled parking there in front, where the sign says handicap parking, they have had to change that, where they're gonna have, I think, four parallel spots, and then they're gonna have two ADA-accessible spots outside and in front of the farthest north wing. So they'll have a total of six parking spots now. But the residential care people, the people who are actually staying there won't have vehicles, but will be able to have visitors and for employees that come. And I think there was, the applicants were gonna be here to be able to speak out and say some stuff, but I think they had a little bit of an emergency on their part, so they were unable to be here.
I'll make a motion that the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, let me read.
All right, are you gonna?
Let me read the title for this, and maybe list some of the conditions. The title for this one, "A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use for Homes for Halos LLC, C25-07, at 2350 North 48th Street, as set forth in Ordinance 4030."
Okay, motion and second still stand? Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, we'll call for the vote.
Carrie's eight zero.
Thank you. And the next one we have is for a church and a C2. And the property itself, it has historically been used as a church for quite a while, I'm not sure how many years, but along. And it's just south of where West Side Burger and Grill used to be, there on Huntsville Avenue. The title of this reads, "A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use for Casa de la Tribu del León de Judah at south of 2019 West Huntsville Avenue, as set forth in Ordinance Number 4030." And this one had one of, it was subject to one requirement that we needed, which was an access easement, just to go through that parking lot to make sure that we knew that they had adequate access through the commercial business to the north to get there.
I had my properties mixed up, that was the one I was asking about on sharing through there.
Parking, okay, okay.
Has that currently been used as a church?
It has, the last use was a church, up until I think it was sold, and I think he said he purchased it at the end of 2023.
But has it been occupied since 2023?
No. Or if it has, they weren't operating under a new and approved conditional use at that point. And they have a shared parking agreement with the commercial business just to the north. An ordinance allows them to have up to fifty percent of their parking shared, and they have exactly fifty percent of it shared. And it sounds like they have a good relationship. We had the parking agreement signed and provided by that business. So we are just waiting for that access easement.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the resolution. Other questions? Comments, concerns? Anyone? Call for the vote.
Carrie's eight zero.
Thank you. All right, now we are on to waivers. The next one we have is actually the Ford Avenue Flats that we just heard. And so this one, this waiver, let me see if we have a good picture. So that yellow line going north and south, that is a future collector. So no road exists there right now, we don't have a name for it. It aligns with where like the Fayetteville Transmission Line is. And so they have been working, the team here has been working with our engineering department, and our engineering department does not see the benefit of that road being built at this time, but still requested that the right-of-way be dedicated. And so this waiver is just for that future collector on that west side of their site, not anything for Ford Avenue.
Have they given us the right-of-way?
Correct, they have.
I move the resolution be passed with option one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with option one. Other comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Call for the vote.
Carrie's eight zero, option one.
Thank you. Our next waiver request is for an applicant who's building a single-family home on Overo Drive. And they came to Planning Commission, their justification is that no other lots or any of the homes on Overo Circle or some of those neighboring streets have sidewalks. Planning Commission recommended for approval with a vote of eight to zero. And Overo Circle would have been a five-foot sidewalk required.
Move the resolution pass, option one.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. You need to say something.
I just want to make one comment, this is that, you may be familiar with this one, this was that lot that had sat there for so long with an unfinished foundation. And glad to see that someone's finally built on it.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Carrie's eight zero, option one.
All right. And our next couple requests, the gentlemen aren't here, but they're a very funny duo. They've come to Planning Commission and all the meetings to pick up their permit, they do it together as a duo. So J and K, this is for two individuals, they've each built a duplex on West Huntsville Avenue. And Huntsville is an arterial, so it calls for a ten-foot sidewalk. And in that ten-foot space of right-of-way, there are a lot of utilities. So in order for them to build the ten-foot sidewalk, they were originally all right with it, but they would have to incur the cost of relocating a lot of utilities and a lot of coordination. So instead, they're asking to be able to build a five-foot sidewalk and a couple feet of green space, which also matches with some of the other homes on that same street. And the title of J is, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver, W-25-33, of Street Improvements, Drainage, Curb Gutter, Sidewalks, and Streetlights, as Set Forth in Ordinance Number 3725, to John Dewise, in Connection with 1509 West Huntsville Avenue, a Duplex."
We don't have an option to cover that, we'd have to modify option one, wouldn't we?
And we could, if it was stated as such, what was requested, we've done that with the past.
I move the resolution pass with option one modified to allow for a five-foot sidewalk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any other comments or questions?
Do we need to do J and K together?
Might as well read them together, because they're both the same.
They are, they are, they're next door to each other, the exact same.
Okay.
Motion would apply to both.
Okay, the J and K.
And K is, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver, W-25-34, of Street Improvements, Drainage, Curb Gutter, Sidewalks, and Streetlights, as Set Forth in Ordinance Number 3725, to Bryant and Kim Dillard, in Connection with 1501 Huntsville Avenue, a Duplex."
Second.
Okay.
And these are both nice-looking duplexes that they've just currently built.
I walk by their lot when I walk to work, but I've sure been missing that sidewalk. And five foot will be plenty. So, all right, any other questions? Call for the vote.
As the states on here, two friends, two lots, two duplexes, two sidewalk waivers, two approvals with option one.
I thought I'd really sum it up for y'all. All right. And the next waiver that we have, this is for a non-large scale that is under review right now with city, it is for Panda Express. They are moving into this location that I think was previously Captain D's and then C-Max, so we're getting a Panda Express. They had some variances that were approved at this Planning Commission. And this sidewalk waiver is for Highway 71. It is just to be able to, we threw in a nice little picture here. And it is, it's to leave the existing five-foot sidewalk that kind of goes in, curves a little bit, rather than upgrading it with a ten-foot sidewalk.
Move the resolution be adopted, option one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve. Other questions, comments? Before we vote, anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Carrie's eight zero.
All right. All right, this is impressive. And our last sidewalk waiver of the night, so this is a development, it was a single-family PUD preliminary plat that we heard recently. You guys approved the PUD rezoning for Haberton Trails. That was down here, and the northern side of it, that is adjacent to Don Tyson, right there, it was actually at the recommendation of city staff, our engineering department, that right now, there's an eight-foot sidewalk that exists there, but it's an arterial, so it's supposed to be upgraded to ten-foot. However, if they upgrade it to ten-feet- However, if they upgrade it to 10 feet, I'm told by engineering staff that it would put, it would put, it would put a joint right where bicycle wheels were supposed to go, and then could potentially risk pedestrian safety. So it was their recommendation to have that. To leave the eight-foot sidewalk rather than upgrading to 10.
Move the resolution to be adopted.
Second. Option one. All right, motion and a second. Other comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Carry's egg zero. Option one.
Thank you.
Think that's the clearest you ever got out of here.
Yeah, thanks Sharon, and again, I know everybody really appreciates this. It's a big help.
It's helpful for me, too.
Sharon, I'm wondering, these drawings you have on there that are highlighted in the specific areas, I wonder if we can get those in our package? Because ours is just a broad view of the whole property, and sometimes we're not understanding exactly what we're looking at.
Yeah, the ones that are actually just included, like with the ordinances in the regular city council packet, right? Okay, because really what we do, and just to give you a little background, is the maps that we have here, too, those are generated for Planning Commission meeting, and so we will carry those over for the Planning Commission packet, Planning Commission meeting, and then city council packet. But if we, we're happy to try and update them, where I can see how this, that little square for Overo Circle is kind of, is kind of hard to see, well, we can do better. See if we can make it more visible. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we're at number eight. Police and Fire Committee and Chairman Brian Powell, Brian?
Thank you Mayor, we had one item come before us, and it was forwarded for recommendation for approval. Chief is here to talk about this mutual agreement with the city of Johnson. But I will read the title first. "A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk to Enter Into Agreement for Mutual Aid Between the Springdale Fire Department and the Johnson Fire Department."
Move the resolution to be adopted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions for the chief? Anyone in the audience? Call for the vote.
Carry's egg zero.
All right, I believe the next two at least are earnest, so City Attorney will take number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to abandon a portion of two utility easements in the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. This would set the public hearing for the October 14th, 2025 city council meeting, and the city clerk will publish notice as required by the statute.
Move the resolution to be adopted.
Second. Okay, motion and second to approve the resolution. Call for the vote.
Carry's eight zero. Item 10 is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring emergency. This is on property located at 1112 South Thompson.
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second. Okay, motion and second to approve the ordinance. Anyone in the room need to speak to this property? Okay, call for the vote.
Carry's egg zero.
Move the emergency clause to be adopted.
Second. Okay, call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carry's eight zero. Item 11 and 12 are the annual resolutions we pass to levy the avalorm taxes, one's for Washington County, one's for Benton County. Item 11 is a resolution to levy Washington County avalorm taxes of the city of Springdale, Arkansas. You may go ahead and read item 12 as well. Item 12 is a resolution to levy Benton County avalorm taxes of the city of Springdale, Arkansas.
Move the resolutions to be adopted.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the resolutions. Call for the vote.
Carry eight zero.
Thank you, those are two things we do every year that we can take for granted. But I want to just remember to thank Sabra and her staff to keep up with that stuff, because there's one city in northwest Arkansas that didn't do that just a few years ago, and it put them in a world of hurt, and it would sure hurt us. So, so thanks for, thanks for doing the routine things that we all take for granted. Any comments from city council?
So, I had a friend and a client that came to the council meeting not too long ago, and I didn't, I didn't even realize they were out there, he was interested in some item, and didn't say a word, so I didn't really even realize he's here until he mentions it to me. And then the question to me was, well, how do y'all decide what's an emergency or not? You know, that's kind of hard to answer, to be honest with you, and sometimes maybe we forget, again, I know we've been kind of chastised by municipal league a few times about not paying more attention to that. But maybe we need to reflect on that again.
Yeah.
Is he referring to the emergency clauses?
Yeah.
Okay.
And in the past, the rationale's been because there's other action that would, pending action, should that not occur, it would, it would back up the actions and cause more problems with the development.
I can only think of one that didn't pass, that property there on 40th Street. I think all the other ones we passed.
My point is, are they really emergencies?
Are they, should they be as automatic as we're making them?
I see, I see.
I'm happy to, like on these cleanup lien ordinances, we usually put an emergency clause on there because there's a time limit by which we have to have these filed, but I'll be happy to state that on the record, if that makes it clear for folks.
And I think from planning, sometimes we'll get, you know, the reason we're asking. Yeah, but, but that's always a good question for y'all to ask. Sure enough.
So should it be kind of whenever it's being addressed, put this first clause as for a pending action, instead of a general emergency, is, that's what Jeff's talking about.
I think staff, staff could try and relate, be mindful to say why this is emergency, and if you don't, if, if they, if they forget or don't do it, then certainly y'all could, if y'all catch it, you could ask, too. It's an emergency. Is that fair?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, a lot of them, it may be the existing property owner doing it for a sale, you know, and that would push that sale back, so some of that is a...
But to Jeff's point, there may be times that we just do it when there's really nothing. Yeah, when there, there may not be anything pending. So it's always a good question to ask.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, any comments for City Attorney?
No sir.
Nothing from me.
So moved.
We're adjourned, thank you all.